Being May 28th, year of our Lord 2024, 6:02 PM. We're going to move on to item two, roll call. City Secretary?
Mayor Hoven.
Here.
Mayor Protem Swanner.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mata.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vazquez.
Present.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item three invocation, we're giving to by Pastor Don K. Wood, Odessa Christian Faith Center. Anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so by standing up. Pastor?
Good evening.
This is your church.
Thank you. Our Father, we come before you in Jesus' name, exalting you and praising you, entering into your gates with thanksgiving and into your courts with praise. Father, we thank you for our city, the city of Odessa. We pray your blessing and your favor, your peace and your joy upon this city, upon all of its inhabitants. Father, we pray for the businesses, we pray for our schools, we pray, Lord, for everything that's taking place in this city to go well, to have your favor, and to be blessed. We pray tonight for our mayor, our city councilman, we pray your will be done, your kingdom reign. We pray, Lord, the wisdom of God would manifest in and through their lives tonight as they prepare, Lord, for the city and everything that needs to be done for this coming days. So we praise you, we thank you, and we worship you in and for all these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Councilmember Cornell?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
City Secretary, we got item five.
We have a proclamation for the Junior League of Odessa. If all the members from the Junior League will come down.
Anybody who want, who wish to make a statement, talk about the Junior League? Want to pass the hat around and raise some thumbs right now? We can do this.
The president is on her way.
Who's the vice president?
That would be me.
Then, vice president, you're up to the podium.
Well, my term begins June 1st, so this will be my official address. I just wanted to thank you for recognizing the Junior League of Odessa. We have been in existence for 75 years, which is quite a feat for a nonprofit, as you all know. And so we are just happy to be several members strong. We continue, we plan to continue to do great things in the community, and we appreciate your support. Thank you for this time.
Trying to convince city councilmembers, Denise Swann, she's on the board, to read the proclamation. City of Odessa proclamation, whereas the Junior League of Odessa has been indispensable force in our community for the past 75 years, consistently dedicating themselves to service. And whereas their unwavering commitment to improving the lives of others has left an indelible mark on the city of Odessa, Texas. And whereas the Junior League of Odessa has demonstrated exemplary leadership, compassion, dedication, and addressing the pressing needs of our community. Now, therefore, I, Javier Hoven, by the virtue of authority vested in me, as the mayor of this grateful city of Odessa, Texas, for the work that Junior League has done, do here proclaim that May 28th, year of our Lord 2024, is Junior League of Odessa Day. In special recognition of its 75th anniversary. So throughout the city, we want to urge all our citizens to join together in celebrating and recognizing the profound impact the Junior League of Odessa expressed our deepest gratitude for their 75 years of selfless service and dedication to making Odessa a better place for each and every one. Let's give them a round of applause. And here's our president. Just in time for the presentation and the giving of the gifts. And if you want to go ahead and say a few words?
I just want to say, I thank you all for this special recognition this evening. The Junior League has a very special place in Odessa's history for the last 75 years. We're a very proud part of our community, and we enjoy being a part of our community. We're proud of everything we've done to impact our community, and we look forward to everything we are going to do in the future. Thank you so much.
Ready, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank y'all.
Next item is citizens' comments on non-agenda items. On non-agenda items, all speakers will be limited to three minutes. Once your name is called, you come forward, and once you say your name, the three-minute time will start. Since it is not on the agenda, the city council cannot respond to your comments. Myra de la Canal.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, Odessa community. Thanks a lot for having me today. My name is Myra de la Canal. I represent the U.S. Export Assistant Center and the Rural Export Center. These centers are part of the U.S. Department of Commerce's International Trade Administration. And we recently opened an office in Midland to serve the West Texas Territory. Our agency has an important mission to help companies in West Texas make sales in international markets and grow their businesses through exporting. Whether they are internationally experienced or brand new to exports, we are here to support them. We have solutions to support them. As a government agency with global presence, we can open doors in global markets that no one else can. Strategically located in 106 locations within the U.S. and 127 locations in foreign countries, in 80-plus countries. Basically, we have, we have a global network that can support U.S. companies and be successful within international markets. Texas is a export powerhouse. In 2023, Texas exported $444 billion. And it's been ranked number one for the last 19 years in the United States, the number-one state to export. So we want to continue with the same trend with momentum and with the ranking. That's why we're here to support companies in West Texas Territory and continue with the exporting momentum and trend. Our new office is located at 1310 North FM 1788, at the Center for Engineering and Economic Diversification. And you can also visit our website at www.trade.gov. And you can enter Midland Office within the search bar or the magnifying glass, and you will get the pertaining information, contact information. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. City Manager, direct staff to be able to exchange and get information. And that way, we can get information, put it on our website, and reach out to the office and see how we can come together in a future meeting, see how we can take advantage of this for our businesses within the city of Odessa. Would like to be able to explain why we can engage in questions? We can?
You want to explain why you can't?
Why we cannot? It's a non-agenda item, no we can't, sir. No, we cannot.
No problem.
I'm directing it to our attorney.
Yes, ma'am. It's a non-agenda item, so therefore, the city council cannot, cannot address you on anything like this, since it's non-agenda.
No problem.
But they can, and I believe the mayor just told city manager Beckmeyer to get all of your information, which he can do, direct staff.
Okay. No problem. Thank you so very much for the opportunity. I hope you enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Christina Williams?
Hi, City Council. My name is Christina Williams. I am an Odessa resident. I am very concerned about the state of Odessa Animal Services and our lack of focus on saving our animals. We know that Odessa Animal Service has a cat save rate of 29%. This only means about 3 out of 10 cats leave Odessa Animal Services alive. Trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return can provide life-saving options for our cats and much-needed resources for our community. Please consider partnering with local and national rescues to save our cats and dogs. As you can see from the group behind me, this is a high priority for our people of Odessa. We care about this and know Odessa deserves better. Our city leadership should support this direction and our goal for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the cards.
Thank you. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of the agenda items before, during, or consideration of said item. Council, will you view the consent agenda as presented and entertain a motion to accept? So moved. I have a motion by councilmember Vazquez to accept the agenda as presented, or second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, indicate by saying aye. Motion passed unanimously. We're going to move on to regular agenda item. Item six, consider purchase of 24, 24 white and one black 2024 F-150 police responder four-by-four trucks. Mr. Adams?
Mayor, council.
Real quick, did we postpone it or did we table this last meeting? We just postponed it. We have to take no action. I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
I'm asking today for the permission to purchase 25 police responder trucks to replace the remainder of the AHCID fleet that has reached the end of its usable service life. Doing so will result in significant cost savings to the city and repairs and maintenance in keeping those older vehicles in service. The purchase will finalize approximately 95% of the PD vehicles having been replaced. In turn, allowing the implementation of the replacement schedule was resulting in future replacement purchases being staggered over multiple years, with smaller quantities having to be ordered. The purchase is on a TIPS contract and will be comprised of 24 white F-150 police responder trucks and one black 2024 F-150 police responder truck. The total cost is $1,313,500. This price includes the delivery to the outfitter. The outfitter charges will be presented at a future council meeting. The vehicles that they will replace will be sold via auction. And all of these vehicles are on the ground, and upon your approval and issuance of a PO, they will be transferred to the outfitter to begin the process.
Council, any questions? Mr. Adams, I've asked this question before, other times when you've presented requests for purchase of vehicles. Now, did our local Ford dealership make a bid for these vehicles?
We did not go through a bid process. We went with an interlocal agreement, which means that the dealers have already been betted, they've already submitted a bid to the, in a local agreement, and they are honoring that price. Price is available to any company within Texas, or municipality within Texas.
And where will these be coming from, if you remind me?
Phil Long Ford in Denver, Colorado.
I guess my concern for bringing that up is always to buy local, if at all possible. Generate our own income within our economy, kind of thing. Thank you.
Councilman Vazquez, we did talk, Chris did talk locally to them. They had 24 pickups, they were all black, and they weren't as readily available. They were offering a good price on them to give them, to give them credit. And what we're going to do, because this has generated, I'm just going to be pretty candid here. It's generated more heat than light as we've tried to buy every set of vehicles. We're going to go out from now on with an RFP process, and whoever meets the qualifications and has the best price with the delivery gets it. If they're in Kalamazoo or if they're here locally, we're going to make it fair and go out like that and not have to go through this every time we buy cars.
I appreciate that. Yes. Council, any other questions?
How long will they be at the outfitter once they're delivered there?
Should be out, they can do a vehicle every seven point, two vehicles every seven point two days. They're just completing our first round of the expeditions that are there. Of course, it's the first time that any police agency has started doing the expeditions with the pre-made wiring harness, so it's taking a little longer on the first one.
So we don't have the expeditions yet?
We will be, we'll be going to Oklahoma to pick up the first three either next week or the following week.
And we have others of that first delivery on the ground at Equipment Services, if you will say.
Council, any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion to accept item six as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Swann, second by councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicating same sign. Okay, we have six to one. Thank you. We're going to move on to item seven. Resolution, consider authorizing city manager to approve the new interlocal contract licensing software between the City of Odessa and South Central Plan and Development Commission. Mr. Fisher, how are you doing, sir?
Oh, I'm good. How are y'all tonight?
You're doing great, thank you.
Good. Okay, so our next item, Jeff Fisher, Strategic Policy Manager. So this is a new interlocal agreement for, and just move this forward here, between MGO and City of Odessa. So MGO is owned by a company in Louisiana that we partnered with in 2020. And that company, that council of governments there, which runs MGO, we had four city departments on that in 2020. So planning and zoning, building inspections, GIS, and code enforcement. Now, the city has grown, and so there's a concern with making sure that we're more efficient for customers. And also, most importantly, what it does is it keeps track of everything from work orders to assets and to cases, permits, planning cases as well. And so the advantage is that the customer can go on on their side, make sure that they have what they need, and then everybody can see it in the same place. That's the advantage of it. And then, of course, it can track things. Also includes a GPS module. So most of you, I think, were here for the work session a few weeks back. And so this is to allow the expansion of services for another 15 departments. And so pretty much most of the city now will be using this, which makes us very unique in the state of Texas. A lot of places just use it for planning and permits, and then that creates issues because, again, the other departments are using different software. So this would allow everybody, customers and city staff, to be able to use one system, one set of software for all of our needs. So these are the new departments that are being added. So police, fire, parks, and recreation, the engineering sections, eventually risk management, animal control as well. And then, of course, we've got utility, streets, fleet, billion collection, solid waste, building services, and equipment services also very important. And then, again, the last step was the GPS. So that'll be able to track our vehicles, where they're going, how fast jobs are done. It can even route from point to point, so the fastest route for an inspector. So there was a lot of advantages, and again, I don't, I don't want to cover what Mr. Hutchinson already did. But so the recommendations tonight, you all have seen the presentation a few weeks back. Approve the new interlocal agreement between SCPDC, that's the parent company of MGO, and the City of Odessa, to allow all current and new departments to utilize the software. And number two, to appropriate $200,000 from our general fund in order to do that. And that is just between, originally, we were going to go May 1st, and then Mr. Hutchinson had a short delay. So this would cover us between essentially beginning of this month and the end of September 2024. So it comes out to about $156,000, but with travel expenses and any unforeseen costs, we've just asked for $200,000. And so this would just approve the resolution for the city to sign that contract, be able to get all those other departments online. Do we have any questions for us?
Council, any questions?
So what happens after the end of September? I mean, do we get to redo the contract?
Yeah, so we've, we would request, in our budget right now, we've requested funds for, for next year as well. But this would just get us from now until the end of the year. And our goal, we may not make, make it, get it all 15 departments online, but our goal is to get as many as we can. Stormwater is very close, planning is very close, so at least be able to have the capacity to do it.
Well, I want to, I want to say thank you, because this is something for two years that I've been asking. So each department can communicate, and then a constituent resident, everybody can communicate and know what's going on without us having to call or one department having to wait on another department. This is going to streamline much better.
This is partially what sped up the permitting process.
Yes.
Already. It's not as fast as we need yet, but it has been.
Improved, it has improved.
Good. That was one of the biggest things that we all hear. Any other questions, comments? Any more interrogation from Mr. Fisher? We got him for two items, so we can have a holdover. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve item seven as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Swann, second by councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, indicating same sign. Motion is approved. Move on to item eight, consider awarding Dunaway a bid for a new landscape ordinance for the City of Odessa. Mr. Fisher?
Okay. Okay, so this next item is for a bid award for a new landscape ordinance for the City of Odessa. So one of the things our development director had tasked me with in our strategic planning section this year was to just look at our standards, see what needs to be improved on. We have a landscape, we have a set of landscape standards already in our city code, but they're a little bit outdated. And a lot of other cities, including Midland and some other West Texas cities, have, have more, I guess you can say, I don't want to say always stricter, but, but more thorough standards and process as well. And so being in West Texas, the sensitivity to irrigation standards, to what types of trees and shrubs can go, including a plant list that businesses can pick from when they're putting in their Walmarts or their Chick-fil-A's or any other development, would be, would be helpful. And again, it's kind of back to like with MGO, where we, we try to streamline everything into one document, and that way, all the city departments can follow through that process. But so it's not just about beautification, it's also about ensuring that there's an efficient process for reviews, as well as making sure that the trees and the shrubs are planted are going to survive and go for a long time. So we're hoping we get this approved, we're not going to have to do this again, so for a long time. So we sent out an RFQ April 10th to 19 firms, most of them were local, and we got back two qualified firms from the response. And so we held our bid committee meeting on May the 13th, and we've decided, our recommendation as part of, I was one of the members of that bid committee, is to recommend Dunaway and Associates. The other company, Lionheart Places, also a very excellent proposal, but didn't have a lot of experience in the West Texas area. And so we're confident with Dunaway, they can do the job, they have a lot of qualified landscape architects on staff and planners and architects in general. So we think they'll do a good job with the city. What we did like about their presentation is that the current ordinance is just basically text. They're going to include graphics, they're going to include process flows. It's, it will hopefully be, with staff's help, easier to follow, so that businesses and individuals that are putting in trees and landscaping on their properties know. Also, the downtown area will probably get a more stricter review, because we really want to beautify the city and the downtown area as well. So for this one, not as big as the MGO project, we are requesting up to $58,000. We can't use, we couldn't use price as part of the original qualifications, but they did reference that that's the amount of money, the maximum, they could do the job. So we think that's, that's fairly reasonable. And again, that will include stakeholder meetings, having them come out to talk in front of you when we get there, holding any public meetings as well to include citizens and any of the other stakeholders and firms. So all of that should be, will hopefully be covered into that amount. And that has already been appropriated for out of the planning special service fund. So we have about $98,000 in there right now. So minus the 58, will still leave us with $40,000 to the end of the year, in case we have another, you know, whether it's carports or another project, we'll still be able to pull from that. So any questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I'm going to ask a question, because I know I got some looks, and I'm going to ask a question, I know what he's thinking.
Sure.
Quickly.
Yes.
When was the last time when we did, when we put together the ordinance for the landscape? I remember, contentious it was. There was a percentage of, you know, remodel and new that kicked it in. We never put anything in, that's why I laugh when you said, well, yeah, we're going to plant a tree, but you got to promise to, we have something, language to water it. That wasn't done the first time.
That's correct.
So, and then there was vegetation, there was a lot of vegetation that was required that really isn't conducive to this area. That was another issue. And so at what point in the process are we going to kind of follow what we did with the carport overlay? And we're going to be able to see comparison of what's existing to what's changing? Because one thing that we're going to get is if you're having a remodel, and there's a percentage of the remodels being done, this ordinance is going to kick in.
Yes.
And when those, when those, those tenants, those landlords, developers, especially the smaller ones, they don't know, rig in calls. And I got one where I, I'm from Odessa, but I'll never build here again, and, and I wasn't aware of it, and I didn't know what the percentage was. So are we going to be able to ask questions and get some of that feedback as we go out and start having stakeholder meetings?
Absolutely, yes. So their, I think their first plan is to put a draft together, do some research. And so they kind of had it in stages, and then the stakeholders' meetings would, could include, I would think, representatives from council. So we'll, we'll get to that, and we'll make sure to inform them as well that y'all are included in that process, for sure.
I really believe that the method that y'all used for the carport overlay and how that was distributed out and got all that feedback to a time, I thought it was very, very productive. Excellent. It was a very productive meeting, and so I'd like to see, if that's what you guys are following, that's the pattern, it'd be very helpful.
Okay, terrific.
Questions?
So will the, the software program we're putting in, will code enforcement be able to see what's going on with those new projects? So that they can enforce what needs to be enforced? Right now, we have Dollar General sitting over there on East Ridge.
Yep.
Put plants in, they all die. So, you know, you drive down East Ridge, you have a fence, you have four feet, you have grass this high, this high, and the next one, and this high, and the next one. And the next one has crushed granite, looks perfect, and zero scape. So we've got to get a hold of that, and that's what I hope this ordinance will do. And so I don't, I don't, as a councilman, I don't want to have to call Gopie and say, get code enforcement over there. We had a house falling down the other day, I had to send Gopie out there to.
Sure.
Keep a house from falling down. But all I'm saying is, it's inconsistent, and when those plants die, because I don't water them, then it even looks worse. So take some time, drive down East Ridge, and look at the Dollar Generals by, right there by Valero, where it's going in. I mean, it's just terrible, it's been that way now since they opened, and they have done nothing about it.
Okay.
My concern is, is that we put the, we put some teeth in it. That's all I'm asking.
That's, and that's the main thing you, you all have kind of commented on. Like, for example, the term permeable isn't really defined in the current ordinance. And so what is a permeable surface? So that, those sorts of things, code enforcement as well will be clearly defined in that process, including inspections. And so it'll probably fall under planning to go out and check that the trees were in before they, and if they're not in, they won't be able to get a CO. There may be some exceptions there where they can appeal. And again, this is still very early on, we don't, we want to see what Dunaway is going to present, but we'll let them know that as well, enforcement and consistency.
And then what I see is, is the next problem is developments. Because again, East Ridge, if you go down East Ridge to Fodry from 338, what you have is a whole bunch of different developments. You have brick walls, and some have zero scape, like some have grass this high. Because, you know, they don't have an association, or they don't know who's supposed to take care of it. So we got to delineate that somehow. So somebody's responsible for that. That's just my thoughts.
Okay. Perfect.
You brought that up during the development speaking, I think Mr. Bell brought that up.
Yeah.
How he's gone above and beyond, but others have not, so there's no, there's no consistency there. And we, everybody should be, developers should be building up their standard. Mr. Bell's development should be a model. A model, yeah. I think we all agree on that. It's pretty up there.
Council, any other questions? Any more interrogation from Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, Mr. Fisher, for Dunaway on the landscape ordinance, their draft on the proposal, what type of timeframe? Do you think they have a turnaround on that?
I believe it's, it's probably between six months and a, I don't think it's going to be more than, than six to eight months. So, I mean, we're, the hope is we'll have it done this year.
Counsel, any further questions? And I'll entertain a motion to accept item eight as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member.
Second.
Second by council member Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Fisher, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all. You too. Thanks.
Item nine, consider approval of the republic service disposal agreement. Mr. Beckmeyer.
Okay, at the last work session, we had Mr. Spano, who's in the audience tonight, come and explain to us and pretty much depth how extending the contract now for 10 more years, which would equal basically a 13-year contract, would save us right around $4.38 per ton, so around $438,000 a year, and over the 13 years, somewhere a little over 5.5 million. And this is just asking for the ability to go ahead and to execute that contract.
Counsel, any questions?
I just have one for councils, Kim, is it, that's a long time, so we're committing a lot to the councils to that contract.
Yes, sir.
That's my only thought.
Yes, sir, but ultimately, though, we will save money, so this is a good thing for the city, and I've looked at it and it's good to go.
Okay, that's all in it up.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I need to have a stand from this vote.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept item nine as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by council member Vasquez, second by council member Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passes six, one abstention. We're going to move on to item 10, consider approving a memorandum of understanding with Centurion Foundation Incorporated. Mr. Beckmeyer.
Okay, this has been one that's been a long time coming, and we've gone through it with pretty much a fine-tooth comb. We've had our lawyers, Jeff, what's his last name, Dan?
Whitfield.
Whitfield. Go through this and make it more palatable from the city side. Remember, it's memorandum of understanding, we're not bound by it. It could be, if we get to a point where we say, okay, we just can't live with this, if we find anything else, we could back up and amend it and move forward, but we need to go ahead and take and get, or our recommendation would be to go ahead and to pass this memorandum of, of understanding at this point, pass it on to Centurion and see if they'll go with it. There's a couple cleanup things that are primarily in the, that are primarily in wording, not so much in legal, that I would want to talk to council with before we do, but the gist of the thing is, under termination for avoidance of doubt, Odessa may terminate, it's number four on the third page, may terminate this MOU, the transaction at any time prior to execution of definitive transaction documents with no further liability or obligation. That's the safety net.
Okay. That's item four.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And it, basically, this just protects the city going forward, is what, what the goal was, and I think we've achieved that, but we've also, it's a good faith effort that we are ready, willing, and able to do business.
Yes.
Which is what we all want. We want the scores complex.
There are some things in here, like in financing structure, we need to be sure that we insert in front of revenue bonds, that it's a private revenue bond, so that people aren't confused thinking that we're putting out bonds.
Reissuing the bond. Right. And, and, we're not.
This is private transactions.
Right.
And it is a pretty complicated structure. Anybody that looks at it's going to scratch your head until you walk through it, but it's, it's a pretty, it's taken a little more time than what I wish it would have, but it is a complicated transaction.
It is.
It's got to be to get it right.
Counsel, any questions?
And council, I suspect that we will get this back from Centurion, and that will be back before you, probably in a few weeks, because they're probably going to want to change it, want to add stuff, and then I'm sure we'll bring it back.
You know, you're probably right, but when I look at the spirit of where it began and where it is now, there's no real difference for Centurion, except that we're not liable for payments if nothing happens.
Right.
That's the hillbilly way of putting it. We don't have to pay if they don't do anything.
Yeah, and that was the crest of it, you know, one of the final ones that we had on our, on the city side is protect the citizens on this part.
That's right.
So at this point in time, has, has the foundation been able to accept any donations that have been offered?
No, but we're willing to take your check anytime, Mr. Vasquez.
Okay.
We're going to, we, with foundation is, the foundation has indicated that they're going to wait to take checks until this is all buttoned up.
Oh, okay.
And if they should.
Yeah, if they should, because Mr. Sewell's name, he's, as chairman of the foundation, his name is all over all that paperwork and his social security number and everything else, and he's not comfortable taking any money until he has all, all of this buttoned up, and I don't blame him.
Okay.
So he's, you know, it's not that he doesn't want to do it, it's just that we don't want to make sure we got everything in place. Yeah, and I, and I think that, that's a smart thing to do. That's what I would do, if I were in his shoes. Turn around and give it back, look pretty silly. We, we want everything to be perfect, and then we will move forward, you know, and that, and that's, that's what we've been doing slowly but surely here, so we're on the right track.
Okay. All right. Any other further questions? I entertain a motion to accept item 10 as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Mata, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Swanner, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to miscellaneous, city secretary.
For the housing authority of Odessa, appoint Marissa Setna. Mayor, that's your appointment.
Sierra? Or, Marissa? Marissa Sierra, yeah.
Sierra.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
That's quick. Entertain a motion to accept for the housing authority of Odessa, Marissa Sierra, as mayor's appointment.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Swanner, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Nothing else? All right. Seeing that there is no more business, eight, who has the over and under?
I have 42.
Pretty close.